Sorry Doug, now we're all here. All right, move on to items for discussion. We have fiscal year 2019 general fund budget. Director Van Boren?
Thank you President Rowley. Fiscal year 19 summary revenues of $10.5 million, expenditures of 10.3. We would end, we're projecting a net surplus of $165,000. Included in the packet is a list of the largest contributing revenues and expenditures, along with several personnel and benefit changes. If the board has any questions, I can certainly go over those at this time, or go over those in more detail if you would like.
This is the exact same stuff we went over this morning, correct? Okay.
The one question that I told you I was gonna ask you is, do we post this, or will we post the entire budget on the village website for public inspection?
The 2019 proposed budget is actually already on the website.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay. Any questions for staff on the general fund?
Not at this time.
Yes. You all reserve?
I reserve the right to ask my questions later.
There will be other questions.
I'm calling the chief Myers on me. He's reserving his 30 seconds.
That we found monies to increase and expand the tree planting and replacement program in the general fund. I'm very pleased about that.
I did think that it was a nice and ironic that there... Oh, it's not on here, is it? The two line items, expanding the planting of trees and expanding the trimming of trees, for both, you know, a total of a few hundred thousand dollars, or whatever it is. So we're planting trees that will then cause the same problem in the future. But residents have come to appreciate their parkway trees, and it's good for the environment to do that. But it comes at a price.
I've come to enjoy my oxygen.
Yes. All right, we'll comment on this further in the future. Item B, we have TIF number two rebate.
Thank you President Rowley. Village Board approved a revised resolution at the May 22nd, 2017 board meeting, authorizing the rebate of TIF funds to taxing districts from the Orchard Road TIF district. For the 2016 levy, surrounding tax districts will receive $5,287 from Butterball, $948.20 from Michaels. Those are the only two that have been taken out in the past. Those are the only two that will be taken out this year. So the other remaining parcels contribute $126,474.32 for a total rebate of $132,710.12. This information was presented to the joint review board in December, and they agreed with staff's recommendation. I will note, the board does have 30 days to review the amount, or they may direct staff by consensus to proceed with a refund prior to that date. If there are any questions, I can answer those at this time.
One question that I have, not a question, just clarification. The 5,000 is not, well, it's not from Butterball.
No, no.
It's based on those parcels. And I would just comment that we should allow the 30 days to run its full course because trustee Heinz isn't here. I don't think it's, I don't think we can consent to approving that tonight, but...
It's items for discussion.
Right.
And then, this is information presented to joint review board, and there was no dissenting conversation. Everybody was happy-go-lucky.
There was question about the timing, but other than that, there was no question about the amount being rebated.
I guess my question, I guess my question is, if you're gonna extend it 30 days, when are these people gonna get their checks? I mean, we've said before, we wanted January, February, and now we're gonna say, well, you might get your check in April, March, April?
Well, my only thing, I mean, trustee Heinz probably wouldn't object to this, so I guess I'll leave it up to the board. If the board's okay with... Because we're not voting on this, but if there's no objection, we can move forward, unless somebody wants the, wants time to review this.
Well, and again, reading the way it's worded, and again, all due respect to trustee Heinz, it says, "The staff is directed by consensus of the board." And there are five out of six of us, so if the consensus was such that it wouldn't affect it, I'm fine with releasing the funds now.
I'm fine with that.
Same here.
I am too.
Okay.
February is better than October, so I appreciate the efficiency that we've learned.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on, snow parking ordinance?
Thank you Mr. President. I'd like to engage the board in a brief discussion regarding the village's snow parking ordinance. I've included on the agenda cover page, a copy of specific language from the current ordinance. However, I'll read section A to you to refresh understanding of this particular ordinance. Section A of ordinance 11-43, it shall be unlawful for any person to park a motor vehicle, or if parked, to allow motor vehicle to remain parked or standing in any public street or alley after the snowfall in which there is two, in which there is accumulation of two inches of snow or more. This prohibition shall remain in effect until such time as the street or alley has been plowed, or the snow removed therefrom. The village's streets shall not be deemed to have been plowed until the lane of traffic nearest the curb has been plowed, or snow has been removed therefrom. To be honest, the current language doesn't work. Public work staff is often risking safety to work around the abundance of parked cars throughout the community. Additionally, many residents are placing garbage totes in the roadway to add difficulty to the effectiveness of clearing snow from the streets. At this time, I'd like to show you a two-minute video. We may not even need to watch the entire thing to get the, get the idea. This is of two of our trucks working in tandem this past Wednesday morning. I think it'll help you better understand the challenges we face. Before I share it with you, before I share with you the options that staff has considered, and ultimately, a recommendation we'd like to bring before the board, before the 2018-2019 snow season, to change that ordinance, please note while watching this video that this isn't even garbage day in the specific zone, so these garbage cans aren't out for morning collection. There's a garbage can in the street. Now, you might ask yourself, I'm, I'm driving this truck, and actually trustee Marisack was riding along for a firsthand account. The, you might ask why, you know, why we're not better at clearing the windshield? These are true conditions. In fact, this is probably the best vision I have all night, because the defrost and the windshield wipers aren't effective at clearing the snow from the window. You notice the abundance of parked cars. We've only gone a block and a half, and there's cars parked everywhere. I think you get the point. We can suspend the video, but there are two pictures I'd like to show you from this past weekend.
Videos now?
Yeah, videos, pictures. Okay, hold on. I think I can do that too.
I wanted to do this.
Give me a second.
So in this picture, it's, you know, a little difficult to see because it's night, but it defies logic to me that cars park opposite one another in the street. That snowplow is 11 feet wide, and it's almost touching the rearview mirrors. I think fire trucks and ambulances are of a similar width, and it's very challenging to navigate these streets when the pavement is dry. But on, you know, snow-covered roads especially, it's even more difficult. And you can see the windrow next to that one parked car. In the second picture, it might be a little bit easier to see. It looks like it was a bit more generous in the space, but still, challenging to navigate.
Can I just comment? Because I wanna, I'd like to thank public works for allowing me to come along at 3:00 in the morning to do the ride-along. And I can tell you that I've had multiple conversations with coworkers. It was the absolute most nerve-wracking experience of my life. I flinched at every mailbox, and when Todd talks about the vision, I can tell you that it was 84 degrees inside of that truck with those defrosters on high, and you had to, you had to have the window down to not die, and I had no jacket. And he still had to stop, I don't know, every 10 minutes, and get out and clean the wiper blades off, just to... The big truck was better. I rode in the big truck later. It was better, because it doesn't get quite as much snow coming over the plow. But the, just maneuvering around the parked cars, and then the forethought, at one point Todd drove past a car, or Mark Wolf pointed out there was a taillight broken on one of the cars that we've gone around. So Todd stopped and took a picture of it, so that he could prove that we didn't hit the car, because you could see where the plow had gone, just so that if that person comes back and says, "Hey, the plow broke my taillight." So this is the stuff that they're dealing with daily. And I just, again, thank you guys for allowing me to come along and experience it firsthand, but I can tell you, I was like this when I got home, because it was just nerve-wracking. And that plow doesn't stop moving. Between the plow moving, salting, paying attention, parked cars, for God's sakes, it was 4:00 in the morning and someone was out walking in dark clothes. No reflective stuff on, walking down the street. Had she not been walking towards us, she could've ended up 15 feet deep in somebody's yard, easily. It just, it defies logic to me why someone would park like this. Some of these cars like this are actually in a cul-de-sac, so if you can imagine that, trying to make the turn, and cars on the inside and outside. So again, I just really thank you for all of the hard work. I came over and thanked you this morning, because with this last snow event, now that I've seen firsthand exactly what you all deal with, different level of respect. So thank you.
You're welcome. So, to continue, staff has considered the following options. One, to reduce the threshold in the current ordinance to one inch. To revise the ordinance to prohibit seasonal parking on the streets. To prohibit parking between the hours of 12:00 a.m. and 5:00 a.m. To allow parking only on one side of the street. Perhaps even allowing parking on the even-numbered addresses side of the street on even days. You get the point. On odd days. Unfortunately, none of those options really help us safely and efficiently provide service that our residents have come to expect. If I may offer a recommendation, I believe the village of Montgomery should reduce the two-inch requirement and prohibit street parking except for in designated areas, once snow begins to accumulate on the roadway. That's often when we're called out, that's when we begin operations, and that's when we start to see the problems with parked cars. It's not, there's not magic at one inch or two inches. It's when we go out, and that's when we go out. Furthermore, I'd like to recommend that street parking not be allowed again until eight hours after the snow has stopped falling. The current ordinance, as, as you may recall, suggests after that curb lane has been cleared, that doesn't, while that's a good measure that we've gone by the house, that doesn't necessarily mean that we are complete with treatment of that street. So I think the eight hours after snow has stopped would better serve us. I think only these revisions would allow staff to provide the best customer service while improving the safety and reducing potential for damage to vehicles. Based on recent feedback regarding some enforcement during these recent snow events, I believe there's support from many throughout the community to make these revisions and uphold the enforcement. Lastly, I'd like to propose that perhaps in a separate ordinance, that we develop some language similar to prohibit the placement of garbage cans in the roadway at these same times. You know, if your garbage day is in the morning, realistically, you should probably put it behind the curb. I don't think we would necessarily be actively enforcing in an area where garbage cans are anticipated to be collected the following day. But as you saw, I think there's three houses in that two-minute video where we went by, and garbage cans are placed in the street in an effort to, I believe, a strategic effort to get us to move further out from their driveway apron, to avoid some of that windrow, when what we're really trying to do is clear the road, and these residents are somewhat working against that. With some direction from the board, I would work to revise the language of the ordinance to better serve the majority of the community, and bring it back for some approval before the 2018-2019 snow season.
I agree with all of your recommendations. I would go so far as to also add, trustee Vaughn and I were talking about this this morning briefly. I think, right now, it's a local ordinance fine, and I believe it's $25. I'd be willing to look at raising that to 100, because it seems like it's always the same cars. And from what I'm hearing from residents, is it's always the same cars on the same streets that they're not getting it through their head, and maybe $25 isn't enough to get it through their head.
Well, and that also begs the question, how many are we actually issuing? Because I, you know, I think we've always stood for compliance as opposed to the dollar amount, and if you're a repeat offender on a local ordinance violation, we can kick it up anyway.
Yes, the, the amounts you're talking about are local internal system. If the police determine that you've got somebody who's abusing the system, they can issue a citation to appear in court, and then the minimum or the maximum fee is $750 per violation. There is no minimum. You know, that's up to the court.
But say I got a, say I get a ticket on a Friday of a storm, and, you know, the 25, it's my first one, it's the $25 one. On Saturday, it's still there. Can I be issued another ticket? And does it go up in, in cost from there? Are we keeping track of who's getting tickets and who's not?
I definitely can't answer that. I'll defer to the chief on that. Yes, you can get a ticket for a second and subsequent offense. No, the P-ticket system, the internal compliance system, doesn't contemplate it going up. The court can of course take that into account if there were multiple tickets on multiple days. I don't know about the, how we're dealing with that.
Yeah, most, with the exception of the last, you know, eight or nine days, we haven't had a serious snowstorm since 2011. We do keep track of who gets what tickets. Sergeant Palco, she will come to me and say that, you know, this plate and this address is in here multiple times. Then we'll take it to court, like Steve said. We'll make it a long complaint form, and the fine will be up to $750. Now, we haven't done that yet today.
But the reality is, see, and I always err on the side of caution with our residents, right? We want them to move their car. I mean, that's really it. We want their car to be in... What I've always stressed is, there are folks in Montgomery that don't have a garage, or even, there's houses that don't have a driveway. But the reality is, the video that you showed us is west side of town, I believe, with two, three-car garages that, with driveways that are not full. And so they're choosing to park on the street, because it would be an inconvenience to jockey cars around in the morning. And it's putting people, I think, people and property at risk. And so, I'd like to see us, I like the recommendations to roll out next year, but I'd like to see us, I know our police department is terribly busy when a snowstorm like that comes in, and that, the accidents and that take, you know, high priority. But really enforce this from the start of snowfall. Whether it's the police department, I don't know if our, if our code enforcement can do something like that, if it's, but really enforcing the heck out of that, so people know and promoting it. Get your car off the road, so you don't, so your car doesn't get hurt, and so somebody doesn't get hurt in the process.
I think my neighbor, in this last storm, got two tickets. But her problem is, her car is broke down in the driveway, and her other, her kid that lives with her can't get in there, so she left it out. He got the two tickets. I think the, it's, it's nice to say eight hours afterwards, but who's gonna set the time? Eight hours? I take it this time when the snow stops, somebody else takes a different time. And believe me, through the east side, that looks like a really large hole to go through right there. I mean, you take a bus, we already had one bus this morning, took a guy's mirror off on Front Street, up by, up by, it's just, it's going to be, but what you get, it isn't really the first time through. It's when they come through, and then the car's full of snow, and the next day, that car's still sitting there. And, or that morning, the guy leaves, and that's what I had this morning, where I went into it and couldn't, I was afraid I was gonna get stuck. Say that car on the right turns around, covers out the front, and just drives straight out, and he's got snow all around. The next guy does the same. Now you got all the snow in an area, and if your trucks don't come by and get it, then what your plan is, off to the right, let that guy through, jump to the left, back and forth, and it's a mess doing it that way. I can see a guy at first, not getting out there and getting his car off, but when it sits there for a day, or then he takes it and leaves and doesn't clear, that's what causes the problems.
I called one in this weekend to the police department. No plates on the vehicle.
Right.
That's not a mobile vehicle. That's basically been abandoned in the street.
Didn't you write 165 tickets, if I'm not mistaken?
That, that's a week ago.
Yeah.
I don't know the total today, but it's well over 200 now.
So you're writing a lot of tickets, but like Steve said, they're not, they're not... Although this girl down here that got the two tickets, I don't want those tickets. My kid can't afford it. Well, he's gonna pay them. That's the way it goes. But he really had no choice, because he didn't go to work either, like a lot of us didn't, and they wrapped two tickets on him.
I might also offer, as we look to revise this ordinance, the current ordinance has some ambiguity in it. I think we all understand what the intent was, but when it says two inches of accumulation, some people may perceive that if the plow goes by after the first inch, well, the clock starts over. Or, once that curb lane has been cleared, you know, in this, this recent snowstorm, crews worked for three days. So, on Thursday night, the first time that lane was cleared, does that mean I'm good, and now I can park there again? Well, really, it needs to be out of the way through Friday. That's why I mentioned the after eight hours, and...
12.
You could say 12, you could say anything. I think eight would effectively serve us in what we are trying to accomplish. There's also some discretion in what you enforce. I mean, if it's been six hours, eight hours, 10 hours after, we're likely good enough, and we're, we're done, and we appreciate the compliance, but...
But the ones that didn't move, then can get...
If they're pulling back into the street after the big truck goes by, but before the little truck goes by, we're not doing ourselves any favor.
And the, and the reality is, the time limit is, is more used for us writing tickets. The reality is, when it's, when the road is cleared, curb to curb, you can put your car back on the road.
I believe one of the residents called Debbie and said, "Well, I just consider a $25 parking fee." So that's why I'm in support of raising that fine.
Yeah, we heard that multiple times.
Yeah, raise the fine.
$25.
The goal is compliance. Compliance doesn't come related to the fine. Compliance, if the fine's high enough, people comply, because it's not a $25 parking.
And that person's second ticket should be, should be more than that. Should be escalated time.
If I'm, if I may, the vehicle on the left here, that's, that's a legal park job right now. That, that street, you're not gonna clear that street anymore.
Right.
It's already down to ice and packed snow. So if we see this, that, that guy's not getting a ticket or towed. So I, I, I do agree with Director Hoppus, that we have to rewrite this to, to get that vehicle, because are you all in agreement that that vehicle's legal or illegal?
Yeah, in Aurora, that vehicle's legal, and the guy with the snow, even though he came to see, would kinda make it is, those guys got three tickets, I don't know what Aurora's saying. They got three tickets, and they got an orange sticker on the windshield, on the driver's side. So I don't know what that means, but, but they keep whacking the guy, in other words.
And that one on the right, that's Youngerman's, isn't it?
Yeah.
Mine?
Yeah.
I see, but I see what you're saying. And 25 might be low. But the reality is, I'm not, I'm trying to make sure that we're not pricing, pricing people out of...
Pricing somebody to make them move their damn cow off of the street so we can do our job safely?
I'm saying enforcing this new ordinance first and see what happens, before you start ratcheting it up. I mean, $100 is a big, is a big fine for somebody, for a lot of people.
How many people pay these fines, Dan? They, most of them pay the fines, or most of them are...
Well, there'll be a percentage that will go to court, and then it goes to collection. So, in 2011, we probably had 80% that, that paid. And there's still 20% out there, though. But we do have a new system. Finance director and I can work with Melanie to put them on, on their water bill now. We didn't have that system in 2011.
In the picture I showed you before this one, where it was dark, the driver in the lead truck had to get out and guide the plow between those two cars, because that's how tight it was. That's at Deer Point and Manchester, where the bend is in the road. So, similar to trustee Lee's comments about the school bus, when you've just come around a bend, and you're trying to adjust your vehicle to get through, it's like threading a needle with a 20-ton truck.
And as much as I appreciate all that you guys do for us and residents, but the goal behind plowing has little to do with us getting up and getting out to work. It's got to do with the police department, the fire department, and ambulances getting to somebody's residence to save somebody who's in need of saving. And so this isn't just about an inconvenience for me, having to, you know, drive through some snow to go to work. This is about saving people's lives, and first responders being able to do their job.
It's a convenience factor in most storms. But when you go back to the blizzard of 2011, or 2015, that's exactly right. It's about getting the ambulance and the fire truck and the police car where they need to be, specifically the ambulance.
Please tell me the two vehicles in that picture got tickets.
I don't know.
I'm not sure either. But I, I'm not... This picture?
Mm-hmm.
The guy on the right definitely, could you see the snow up high?
Yeah, for sure the guy on the right would have. Most likely got towed too, if he was still like that.
I like Doug's idea about the 12 hours. I'm willing to go even 24 hours. That way, there's really no question, after the snow stops, you can't park on the street for 24 hours. But I also, like I said, I'm, I'm supportive of raising the fine, because that's how you're going to get compliance.
And maybe for next year, we, we do both. We change the ordinance, we take the fine up to 50, since 25 seems to not be effective, and we...
I think the fact of the matter is, you're right, we want the compliance, but there isn't the manpower to enforce it everywhere. While they may have written 160, or it could be 260 tickets, that's a fraction of the problem. Having traveled all the streets during a snowstorm, I can find that in one subdivision sometimes. In that two-minute video, we literally only covered two blocks. I think there's more than a dozen cars parked there.
Right, and how would raising it to 50 help that, help, get more, so people would know? They would know not to park on the street. I'm just saying, if we enforced our ordinance, maybe more people would know.
Well, they'll know, because it's $50. They won't be making the comment that it's $25.
Yeah, and that person should go to court. I'm just saying, we gotta, we need to be cognizant of the, the first fine, the ding, right? Hey, you should, you should've moved your car, it's $25. The next one's 100. Just like if you get a parking ticket in Chicago, and you pay it in two weeks, it's cheap, and it goes up to 100. I mean...
Do we have a reduced fee if you pay right away?
No, but after seven days, it goes to 50.
Okay.
But we also would need Attorney Anderson to assist with this, because although you can say eight hours or 12, I, I'm the one keeping track of when we go to court, and if it's winnable in court. Because most towns around us have the similar ordinance. Yeah, they all have two inches, and then they have the, you know, clear curb to curb, or, or until the street's clear. So we, we might have to tweak that also.
I think tonight, our goal was just to see if you guys were okay with considering changes to the ordinance. Since I believe I'm hearing that, then I guess I'd ask to allow, you know, myself and the chief and Todd and Steve to get together and talk about what we think.
uh, we can do to bring back to you then for an ordinance for you to actually revise. But before we went to that trouble, we just wanted to make sure that you guys are good with that, so we will do that.
One more suggestion maybe, in our neighborhood and I suppose most, there are really quite a few s- snow signs along the roadway to tell people there's no parking. So we maybe should look at, we're, we might have to reword those and maybe we could make that language more persuasive in the process. And, and I'm not sure about the process, but we might have to budget for.
Like, I just, I just drove past a sign over in Oswego and it said, you know, truck weight limit twenty thousand pounds strictly enforced. So the rest of them you don't enforce.
Lightly enforced. Well, you know, the thing about signs, the thing about signs is, you know, we, we can try and certainly we can enhance them, but like even signs like this one, for example, they get ignored, you know, on video. By plow trucks.
Can we recall the video? I don't believe that's accurate.
All right, I think we're good there. Anybody else have any comments? We have, uh, we're not gonna implement this obviously in the next two weeks. Uh, it'll be for the next season, so I appreciate you guys bringing that forward. I'll move on to, uh, uh, next item, which is lead service line replacement project update and request for discussion. Engineer Wallers?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so I wanted to come back to the board, give a quick update on where we're at in terms of our assessment of the lead service lines in Marbury. And we've got some recommendations that we think make a lot of sense. We'd like to get board concurrence on that. So we have been able to inspect ninety-two out of the ninety-six homes. We've gotten great cooperation from the residents. I think people are, um, very excited to, uh, have the lead service line replaced. Um, however, we also, you know, one of the reasons we wanted to get, uh, started on the assessments was to be able to figure out exactly how we're gonna, uh, perform the work and bid the work and move forward. What we did learn is that of the, um, homes out there, we have eighty-two that are slabs. And those present a particularly interesting issue. If you think about it, when you have a basement, it's fairly routine to go into the basement wall and set the meter and do the plumbing. Uh, in the homes with slabs, typically what we found is that the meter is in the middle of the home. So we have to directionally drill under the slab and then bore down from that point and, uh, and then pull from the inside of the house, the service line out to the curb so we can connect it. So it's a, it's a more challenging process than it is if we have basements. So that's, it's can be done and has been done in other communities. So, um, but that was one of the things that we were concerned about is finding out exactly what we had to do to work, uh, work with here. The other ancillary things you learn is that, um, you know, you may have relied on the water service to ground your electrical. And if we replace that with a plastic pipe, uh, for ease of installation on the slabs, we have to have a counter method for electrical grounding. So again, not a huge problem, just a detail that needed to be sorted out. Um, the other detail that we learned as we got into it was that quite a few of the homes have the potential to have, uh, asbestos tile or mastic in them in the area that we're needing to work. So because if that is the case, then when we go to drill the hole, let's say through that asbestos tile, we need to know that ahead of time so we can bring in a mitigation contractor to physically contain the dust that's created from any disturbance of that tile or mastic so that it doesn't go into the rest of the home, so it's completely contained. Asbestos tile is perfectly safe if it's undisturbed. It's just only when you cut into it and, yeah, get the asbestos airborne. So it's another element that now what we'd like to do is go back into the homes that have been identified. And there's about eighty-two that we have flagged as being potential for asbestos. We're gonna wanna go back in with a mitigation contractor to sample it to determine whether or not in fact it is asbestos tile or something that looks like asbestos tile. Once we make that determination, then when we bid the project, we'll have the ability to, um, know how many of those homes will have to have mitigation done on, prior to the, um, service contractor coming in to actually do the replacement. So it's just one extra step, but it is taking some additional time and it'll, it'll be obviously some additional cost. But anyway, as part, so that's ongoing. We're continuing to work at that. Our intent was to start the replacements this fiscal year, uh, to start the construction season. Um, however, we learned one other thing and that is that, uh, LNA EPA does have, um, grants that are set up for lead service line replacements that are set aside that allow for loan forgiveness in the low interest loan program. So in the example that I put in the memo, if you had an eight hundred thousand dollar project, um, and you took out that eight hundred thousand dollar loan, they would forgive half of that, uh, loan. So it would be a four hundred thousand dollar, uh, loan instead of an eight hundred thousand dollar loan. So obviously that's a huge benefit, we think, to the village and the project. So what we're asking tonight, if you concur with that, we would like to delay the project by one year so that we can go into the loan interest loan system and petition to get a grant. And as, you know, that system is time-consuming, but we believe we'll be able to, um, be able to do the work in two thousand and nineteen, uh, fiscal year twenty, uh, you know, in, in the next, not this construction season, but the following construction season. So we think there's a lot of benefit to it. Uh, and we do think that, um, some of the mitigation related to the asbestos will drive our costs up a bit. So again, we think it's a good hedge, uh, in that regard as well. So this evening, that's what we're asking for is just concurrence that we're okay to proceed on that basis and then we'll come back to you. Uh, there'll be additional approvals that'll be needed for the loan interest loan program, but we'll pursue that actively.
So you're looking for our consensus to hold off and save four hundred thousand dollars? At no risk or cost to anybody?
And, and that's, I think, a very important, uh, point that the mayor. The issue with the lead service lines is not a, um, immediate health risk. They, they've been in place for a long time. The village's water supply doesn't contain lead and it's stable. So there's no, there's no immediate threat. Um, it's something that needs to be replaced, but it's not, a one-year delay doesn't have any material impact on those, uh, residents.
When you use four hundred, that was just an example. It could be three hundred or it could be five.
It's gonna be whatever, half of whatever it costs, so we won't know that until we bid it. Up to, yeah, the maximum is fifty percent, it's fifty percent up to the maximum of, uh, five hundred thousand. So if it's a four hundred thousand dollar project, you can get two hundred thousand in grant forgiveness or loan forgiveness.
Sounds good.
Okay, we'll proceed in that matter. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item E, which is well three rehab. Who wants that?
So, uh, well three rehab, uh, we are going to be doing, uh, rehabilitate well number three this year. And we do have a, uh, PSA with Lane Christensen Company that was approved in two thousand and sixteen that runs through two thousand and twenty-one that provides for, uh, us to use them for maintenance projects. There's a task order system, uh, that's in the, uh, PSA that we would bring back to you for approval. It also affords, uh, certain discounts to the village if we go through that process. So we've used it in the past. I just wanted to make sure that, um, everyone's still comfortable with proceeding in that fashion. So it's really just, if there's any objection, we would, uh, take a different method of, um, getting cost. But this has worked well for us in the past, so the staff would recommend we just proceed with it.
And this is the PSA that we approved, and you may have just said this. We approved it then several years ago that allows us to kinda do these things a little bit quicker, um, with the company. Any objections to doing that? Not hearing any? Thank you. All right, any newer unfinished business?
I have four items. I may?
Yes, it's nine thirty, so.
Yes.
The floor is yours.
Actually, it's nine twenty-nine. It's not quite nine thirty yet. A resident reached out to me about, uh, the need for stop signs at Chad Court and Adam. Uh, I went out and looked at it right now. Chad Court is a, it's, it's not a smaller court. There's kind of a roadway that leads into it. Um, right now, um, there is a stop sign at the far south end of Chad, but there is no stop sign where Chad, Chad Court and Adam all intersect. And right now, um, as I, the resident was explaining to me that they believe that there should be a four-way stop because right now Adam is used kind of as a drag strip because there's nothing there right now. But, um, can we look into the stop sign thing, I think at least at Chad Court and Chad itself?
We can certainly do the traffic counts and things necessary to evaluate that. Given the proximity to the traffic circle, that's right, it's about a hundred and fifty feet off the traffic circle. Drag racing is the concern. I don't think a placement of stop sign at that intersection's gonna combat that problem.
The placement of stop signs on Adam itself, right?
Once you get west of that, that's where you have the ability to really speed up. There's nothing there. At the moment, there's some proposed development in that area forthcoming, but at the moment, there's nothing there.
But we have a process and a form and staff can look at that.
Uh, second item, uh, in our updates last week, I saw that the state still has not provided any sort of, um, information regarding Route Thirty and the size piping that would be needed underneath there. Do you know when we'll have the engineering prepared? And do you know, once we discuss options, when we would be bidding those options?
So we initiate, probably the, the longest lead critical path item is the Commonwealth Edison easement. So we've reached out to ComEd to start that process. We've also been directed by the administrator to start moving forward with plans and specs. I haven't set an exact schedule, but I'll get that to you. We wanted, we would like to hear from the state prior to finalizing the plans and specs, but absent that, um, we have a pretty good i- indication of what we think would work best and that that's what we would pursue. So I can give you more information on the schedule.
Is this something that you think we could break ground on in the spring, once it's bid?
Yes, and I think that's really gonna more depend on ComEd than, um, the plan set.
Okay. Um, property, and another resident reached out to me, property west of Chad Court, where that commercial development is, that entire vacant area is all zoned for business and commercial, correct?
Fronty on Route Thirty.
Yes. All the way up to Adam, that whole rectangle? Yeah. Okay. And then last, um, another resident had reached out to me, uh, about Lakewood Creek sidewalks. The village doesn't handle those, do they?
Bowingham?
Lakewood Creek. They were, someone had, they had reached out to me and saying that the village hadn't done any of the sidewalks around Lakewood Creek School. And I didn't think that we did, but then they said that they had been done, so.
Snow removal?
Yeah.
No, no, we don't do any.
The school does.
Does it? Okay.
Around the school property, they do. Now, I know that there's some residents. I have a neighbor that lived behind me that used to snow blow all the way up to the school for the kids. So, but that's a residents' choice thing. It's not something that the, the school district does their sidewalks right around the school and right in front of the school. But other than that.
Yeah, I, I didn't think it was the village, but as long as they were cleared, I'd, the problem solved, so.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All right, the one thing that I would add is, um, in the recent snow removal, uh, Todd sent me a number earlier today of the actual cost to do that work. And so I just wanted to share that with the board quickly, uh, cause I know it's very late. The, um, and we'll probably have this in the notes as well. Just the, the one thing that I would note is that it was thirty-eight thousand dollars of overtime over the last, over an eight-day period, uh, which is insane, literally. And so, um, it's a significant impact on our, on our operations. I just thought I'd wanna share that with you guys, so you have that. When residents, uh, say to you that we need to run, you know, village like a business, we wouldn't have done that if it was, if it was a business. But people expect the roads to be clean and so, uh, that's what we do, we do.
And I will commend Director Huppens that on the delayed start with the union contractor. Some flexibility with starting times. So when I texted him at twelve fifteen to find out what time we were going out, cause it had started snowing around ten thirty, he said, "I'll pick you up at three." Because that was the earliest he could start the guys with flexing their hours forward to help reduce some of that overtime cost. So he's working very diligently to watch those costs wherever he can.
Our notes had more overtime than regular time, mainly because of the time when the snow came in.
We find that most snowstorms seem to be evening or overnight. And while you're accurate that I do watch and pay attention to that, the first priority is road conditions, so that's not always a factor.
At eleven o'clock, it was pretty light.
Particular storm.
Okay. With that, we will have future meetings. There they are. Um, executive session, we're gonna go in for three, uh, items. Acquisition of real property, employment of an employee and litigation, which is filed or pending. So with that, I'll, um, entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it.
Hey, Penny, you're out.